Hey, call public meeting to hearing to order, notice of public hearing. A public hearing will be held at 6:00 PM August 12th, 2025, at Belton City Hall Annex, 520 Main Street, during which citizens may be heard regarding property tax rates proposed to be set by the city of Belton. The tax rates shall be set to produce the revenues required to support the budget for the fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2025 and ending March 31st, 2026. Excuse me. These rates are based upon the current assessed valuation figures as provided by the Cass County Assessor's Office. Each tax rate is determined by dividing the amount of revenue as authorized by the Missouri Constitution by the current assessed valuation. This value is multiplied times 100 resulting in a tax rate expressed in cents per $100 valuation. So we have a public hearing.
I'm here to answer any questions that anyone from the audience might have?
Turn that on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm here to answer any questions from the public that you all might have.
Anybody has any questions, come to the microphone, state your name and address, and we will go from there. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on and adjourn the public hearing. Do you call the meeting to order? Pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Pryon.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Davidson.
Here.
Councilmember Pryon.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember McCallum.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum. At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence for Randy Ashes. He was on the tree board and died suddenly this week, so take a few minutes, few seconds. F, personal appearance is one, Mike Miller. State your name and address.
Mike, M.I.K.E., space, Miller, M.I.L.L.E.R., address 3015 Lazy Acres, Northern Cass County, Missouri. I'm kind of not a Belton fan right now, so I don't use my hometown, but it's, I am good to go. I went to my first park board meeting in 1972. Me and three or four friends of mine decided to play wiffle ball at, then it was Diamond Two at the Belton Park, it's now Diamond Three. And the police told us we had to go to a park board meeting to get permission to play for a half hour, and that was a pretty quick meeting by the park board. But I got to meet some outstanding people that was on the park board. Bob Wallace, Leo Mosby, Jim Burke, Kenny Ochslocker. That was, they were on the park board for decades. Over the years, I've done some research, not much, 38 city councilmen at one time were on the park board. Three were mayors. That's a, the park board's been a valuable asset, and I heard the rumor that you all were wanting to get rid of it, and you woke up this fat boy. There's been some incredible people, and the park board and the park department has always had a good relationship. They've gotten things done over the years. And, you know, like, Mr. White, I heard you don't, you know, you want the, you want it because you want to see the financial stuff. Well, you should get a financial statement every month, because I used to get them, and, you know, you can't name me a park board member in the last 50, 60 years that wanted anything bad to happen to the park, you know, that don't check the money, that don't check and see what's going on. So, you know, I hear you guys wanting change, well, that's, that's not change right there, that's, that's arrogance. We have, what if it gets turned over to the city? I can remember right after COVID, when the, when we, the park had to shut down, the government gave everybody money to help offset some, some of their losses. Park had $600,000 coming to them. City said, no, we're going to give it someplace else. You know, that's, you know, you call that change, but that's, that's nothing but a slap, slap in the throat to the, you know, that's choke, you're trying to choke a park board, a park staff when you do that. You know, if it does get the change, what happens if there's a huge maintenance problem? Right now, the park staff can call an emergency park board meeting in a, in a day, they can fix the, you know, they can have the problem money-wise or whatever resolved. If it's on the city now, you're going to have to wait for a council meeting and maybe two more weeks for, you know, a second reading, I would hope not. So, and that's not, that's not change, you know, that's, to me, is unnecessary, needless. The, when I first was on the park board, we had a great, nice young man by the name of Shane DeWalt, and he said, hey, why don't you come out to, we had a state tournament out at Marky Park, 12 and under. He said, why don't you come out this weekend? Well, I assumed I was going out there to keep score. You know, that's kind of been my background for 45, 47 years somewhere. Well, I went out there and I said, Shane, what do you want me to do? And he said, I want you to be an ambassador to the city of Belton. And I, you know, I said, I'll do that. And there was another, Dean Van Winkle was also out there too. And what I did, I introduced myself to the out-of-town teams, and so did Dean, and I told them of, we're at Belton to eat. You know, I, all the, you know, anybody that knows me knows I eat at most of them, but I didn't give them any of the, the brand, franchises. I gave them the, you know, the Snack Shack tacos, the Sneed's bar, you know, I gave them those places where they get a good omelet. And not only that, but, you know, laundry mats, sometimes uniforms need, need cleaning. I said, well, there's two or three laundry mats here in town, sporting goods, gosh dang it, maybe you need, you know, scorebooks, baseballs, whatever, that, that stuff, when I used to take teams out of town, that's stuff that I always needed, you know, and I just thought that's something we had to do. And so I didn't consider it a part where I considered being ambassador, because that's what I was told, and I did that for the most seven to...
All right, it's been five minutes.
Has it been five? Well, wrap it, wrap it up, Mike, go.
My last thing is, you got incredible park staff, incredible, and if you remember the parks, was number one in the Kansas, Kansas Star Magazine about 2008, what an incredible, you know, not Blue Springs, not, it was Belton. You got incredible park staff, you've always had good park boards. To me, you leave the parks alone and keep your freaking change in your pocket, okay? You've got to keep it the way it is. Thanks.
All right, item two, Mary Cummings.
Mary Cummings, can you hear me? 509 Buoyanus to drive Belton. I stand before you tonight because the resolution regarding the park board is more than a procedural matter. It's a decision that will impact how our community values, transparency, volunteer service, and the future of the parks. Belton Code of Ordinances, Section 17-40, states the mayor with the advice and consent of a majority of the entire city council before June 1 of each year shall appoint three directors of the board who shall hold an office for a term of three years and until successors are appointed. Belton Code of Ordinances was updated February 28th, 2025. Does the fact that one of the persons on the resolution did not even apply until June 23rd, 2025, even make them eligible for this appointment? I have yet to get a clear understanding how this in fact follows the ordinance with fidelity. Let's move on. The park board exists to serve the people of Belton, protecting our green spaces, planning for recreation, and ensuring the public has a voice in these decisions. It's made up entirely of dedicated volunteers who give their time, energy, and expertise, not for personal gain, but for the betterment of our community. This board has been, has been fiscally responsible, we have never misused funds, and during the Westover land issue, we did not spend a single, whoops, a single dollar on lawyer fees. Every decision has been made with respect to the public's money and trust. It's important to note that this board has not broken any laws, our members have acted with integrity, followed the rules, and worked within the boundaries of our authority. The resolution you are considering would remove committed members without cause and weaken the link between the community and its parks. This sends the wrong message, that political convenience outweighs public service, fiscal responsibility, and lawful conduct. Belton's parks are more than land, they are spaces where our children play, where our community gathers, and where we get our community pride. They deserve leaders who are independent, knowledgeable, and willing to speak up for what's right. That's the kind of board we have right now. I urge you to reject this resolution, let's resolve the differences through communication, not removal. Let's keep our focus where it belongs, on what's best for Belton's parks and the people who enjoy them. In closing, I would like to leave you with the words I live by. Life won't always be fair. People won't always be kind, but you can always choose to show up with courage, kindness, and integrity. That's my power, and I'm hoping that it's each and every one of yours as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Item G, unfinished business, one, motion approving the final reading of Bill 2025-40.
An ordinance amending Chapter 13, Section 13-355 of the City of Belton Code of Ordinances relating to crosswalks.
Present.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Richardson.
Aye.
Thompson.
Yes.
Pryon.
Aye.
Davidson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
McCallum.
Aye.
Mayor Larky.
Aye. Motion carries. Item two, motion approving the final reading of Bill 2025-41.
An ordinance readopting ordinance number 91-2073 as amended, establishing a procedure to disclose potential conflictive interests and substantial interests for certain municipal officials.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Richardson.
Aye.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mayor Larky.
Yes.
Davidson.
Yes.
Pryon.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
McCallum.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries. H, new business, one motion approving the final reading, approving the first reading of Bill 2025-43.
An ordinance levying and fixing the rate of tax for municipal purposes for the park fund and for the debt service fund for fiscal year 2026.
Present.
Second.
The motion is second, you're up.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you tonight is an ordinance that would set, actually, the first reading of an ordinance that would set the general park and debt service levies. Just a quick recap of how this works. State statute allows us to look at the revenue from the previous year, and we look at three percentages in order to raise the revenue for the current year. We look at the actual assessed growth, and this year it was actually 9%. The consumer price index, this year it was 2.9%, and then 5%, which is what the statute allows us to raise it, but we can only raise it the lower of the three. So this year, 2.9%, which was the CPI, that is what we raised the revenue. So with that, and the mayor described how this is done earlier during the public hearing, our levies this year are going to be set at general fund, 0.4464 per $100 assessed valuation. Park and recreation will be .1987 per $100, and the debt service will be 1.3733, for a total of 2.0206, down from 2.0446 from the year before. I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? You said 33, but I think it's, you have a 55 on here, on debt service.
On the public hearing?
Yeah.
So the, yeah, the public hearing, as stated, it could change, and it did, because my assessed valuation came back a little bit higher, which allowed me to rate, or lower the levy a little bit more.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
That's, that, just for the public to understand how that process works, we have to, we have to do a public hearing and a public notice, and the notice that goes out, we don't have the final numbers back from the state before that public notice has to go out, so we have a little disclaimer on the public notice that says these numbers are subject to change based on our final numbers that we get from the state, and so that's why the numbers might be a little bit tweaked and why we had to actually lower the levy more than what it said in the public notice, just for the public.
So just to clarify, it went down from 1.3755 to 1.3733? Correct. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you for that explanation, too, for everybody that's watching and listening. Anybody else? Go ahead.
And you said the growth was down?
No, the actual growth was 9%.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Two, motion approving resolution 2025-63.
A resolution approving a contract for services for the design build of the water mains project between the City of Belton, Missouri and SDI LLC.
Present.
Second.
The motion is second, you're up.
Well, I'm very excited this evening to talk about water lines. I know everybody always is, but tonight is actually a chance where we're actually replacing water lines and making a big difference in our city. Tonight, we're talking about six streets, we're talking about Hawthorne, Berry, Redbud, Lacy, Pacific, and Prairie are the six streets that we're going to be working on with this replacement. Now, this contract that we're doing is slightly different than we've done in the past. Normally, when we bid a project and construct a project here in town, it's a design, then a bid, and then a build. This project is a design, bill, I mean, design-build project. So what the difference is, is that we basically have lined out what water lines we want replaced. We told the contractors where the to and fro's were, we told them how many hydrants, how many valves, and what was needing to be done, and we let them put a team together, both of consultants and of contractors, to do the work. So they actually have to design the job, get approval from us and Missouri DNR of the project, and then they can go out and build the project. So it's a little different delivery system than we've used in the past, but it's going to speed it up, we don't have to go through a long selection process designing it and getting it out the door. This literally got, got it out the door as quickly as we could. And so, as part of the process, we issue an RFQ, it's request for qualifications. So we put that out on the street, and we got five contractors or five teams that submitted proposals to us. From those five teams, we actually interviewed three of the teams, and we interviewed all five, and we selected three of the teams to go to the next step. At that point, we actually went out, did a site visit with each one of the teams, they saw what we needed to do, we showed them everything, we actually had all the utilities marked, so there was no doubt what the job was going to entail. We then gave them the quantities, they came back and gave us a price. There's three items we looked at, the price, the schedule, and the method that they would do it. You would think, well, how much different a method there could there be? Well, you could actually put it in the green space and go through the, go through the grass, go underneath the driveways and do it that approach, or you could dig the street up, and as you've seen in the past where we've left the four-foot concrete mark where we've been at replacing water lines, we would have it, you could do it in the street. Now, each one has pluses and minuses for speed and for cost, and all those things vary in how they're going to do it. We selected SDI because they had the best price, they had the, actually, the best schedule, and they had the same basic method that everybody's going to try to do, which is go through as much of the green space as possible, there's going to be times they're going to have to be in the roadway. And so we felt very comfortable with the consultant, I mean, the team that we have selected, because it is the best value for the city of Belton. This project should take about six months, depending on weather, it's going to go into winter, so depending on what you've seen from the Weather Channel and how the winter's going to be, some say it's going to be warmer and rainier, some people's going to say it's snow a lot, who knows what's going to happen, but this is what we're going to do. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, it is in the budget, and so, and that's a question you guys always ask, and so I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you might have.
Have we used SDI before?
We have not, but as part of the first round, they have to provide references, and so we called many other cities who have used them, and several of the bigger cities that have used them said that they're actually their number one contractor right now.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
I would just, this is more encouraging for residents or anyone else that may be unfamiliar with the project. There are a lot of answers within the agenda packet and what was provided with the team, the project itself, and, and also just maps of the planned work. I'd say, I think about the only map I didn't see in there was the one that we spoke of during our work session when we kind of went over what was, you know, where our water main needs were. So I guess I would just encourage anybody, if, if you're still unsure after you look at the packet, to go back and look at that work session that we had on this topic, because that really gives a big picture overview in addition to what this is providing. So I just wanted to point out that there is a lot of good information in that packet on, on SDI themselves, but also the project.
I know in the past, we've had issues where the, when they did cut through the road, that it always wasn't paved over, and it was left for quite a while, and this will be addressed by them using more green space, and, and they'll know that they'll have to come in and patch those holes, correct?
Correct, and that's one of the things that, when we did our last jobs, which were, our big job that we did was the northeast portion of town, we learned a lot of lessons on how to do bigger jobs and what we should do differently, and so what we've told the contractors in this, they can't just go and tear up all six roads at one time. They're going to have to do one road, there's two different areas, they can open up one road in each area, finish that road, and then move to the next one, and don't just do a train all the way through the whole thing and open it all up, and then slowly replace all the lines, and then slowly restore it. They need to restore as they go, so we don't end up with that situation again.
Yeah, that was our biggest complaint that we had, was that the ditches were left ditchy for a long time.
And we learned, we learned a lot of lessons from that one, and so those are all in this new one.
All right, thank.
Go ahead. Anybody else?
Just a point on the qualifications, I was glad to see someone from the University of Missouri and Missouri S&amp;T on this team that we're using.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, motion approving resolution 2025-064.
A resolution appointing Nicholas Anderson, Shannon Locke, and Blake Walbrink to the municipal park board.
Present.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
So there's been a lot said about the June 1st, Mr. City Attorney. Can you please clarify that for me, because I want to make sure I've got my head wrapped around that.
Yeah, and I provided to the council. I provided, provided to each member of the city council, kind of a, just a brief, I won't even call it a memorandum, but just a brief kind of outline of when we, when courts or when anybody reviews statutory or charter or ordinance provisions regarding timelines, whether or not they become mandatory or directory. Based on the relevant case law, specifically Shawley versus Bowman and Estes versus Cole County, the timeframe and the June 1st deadline set out in the charter are directory and not mandatory, as they are made with a view to the proper orderly and prompt conduct of business, and additionally, nowhere in the section is there a stated penalty or consequence for failure to comply with the June 1st deadline.
So in a nutshell, that means it's more of a, when you, potential?
Yeah, and so I'll just point to, I provided a brief parenthetical for Estes versus Cole County, but in that case, there's a statutory provision that requires that assessors be paid monthly or semi-monthly, and then that is the, the end of the statement in the statutory provision, and in that case, the Missouri Western District Court of Appeals said that that was directory and not mandatory, and that Cole County could decide to pay its assessors at whatever timeline it wanted to.
I'll come back, go ahead.
This is just a really, for me, frustrating and disappointing situation. Having been the park board liaison prior to Alex joining council and taking over that role, I've got to witness the park board in action, I've got to see the good work that the Parks Department does, and I feel like this is retaliatory for pushing back against the city council as it related to Westover, that land deal, which thanks to rumor and social media, seemed to, much further down river than it actually was. And so here we have three folks who have done a fine job, granted, they have different approaches, but if we are penalizing people for being too assertive, there were other folks in the meeting that may not get reappointed next year or the year after, and, and I would like to see if there's some consistency with this. year or the year after, and I would like to see if there's some consistency with this or not. It's just disappointing. So I guess what I would ask is, by a show of hands, is anybody willing to reappoint the three folks that are not up for reappointment? Two. I'm asking if Zeb, Rusty, and Mary would have votes to get reappointed. I feel like the answer's no, but I just wanted to see.
You're asking us to do a vote before the vote?
No, I'm just, I'm asking for a show of hands. Is that all right, Patrick?
I think if there was maybe just a consensus taken of the council, that could be okay. Obviously, we only vote on matters after motion and so forth. I would note for the council and the public, the way appointments work, it's mayoral appointment, city council advice, and consent. So it would be more phrased of who would be willing to provide advice and consent to those members, because it is a two-tiered approach, similar to the approach provided in the federal constitution as well.
Thanks, Patrick. Obviously, this is not a vote, but I just would kind of like people to stand behind their choices on this, is what I was going for. However, getting the sense that there are not five folks who would reappoint these people to continue in their service even though they desire to do so, I don't want to penalize the additional three people who put their names out there and are willing to step in and do a good job for this. And additionally, I would echo what Mike Miller said earlier, that this isn't just about three park board positions. This is going to affect park staff. They're going to see this and interpret this as the council doesn't have their boards back, or the council doesn't have their back, and that is not beneficial to anyone. So, I am just, through the lens that I've witnessed all of this take shape, I'm just really disappointed that it has come to this.
Go ahead.
Let her, go ahead. Go ahead, Carla.
My concern is, I looked, and on July eighth, we reappointed Donald Walton to the Planning Commission, and then also, we reappointed Robert Miller to the Zoning Board of Adjustments. And tonight, you're asking us to reappoint all eight of the code enforcement adversary committee. So I'm concerned, if you want change, why aren't we changing these other groups? There's got to, and I don't like to use the retaliation word, but there's got to be a reason. You're not changing anybody but the park board. It just doesn't make sense. There's no vision, there's no plan. Two weeks ago, Mary was fined for a reappointment, and now she's not being reappointed. It just doesn't make sense. They spoke up. I feel like they're just being.
In response to some of your questions, you know, Mary was on the agenda three weeks ago, and then it was turned down. So I had to bring back something else, different than what was on the agenda. And I talked to each and every one of you, and got your idea of why it failed, so I could bring something back. And I believe you and Allison voted no, because you wanted to keep the old three on. Chris voted yes to keep Mary on. I voted yes, because it was my slate of candidates, and the other five people in the room voted no, because they want a new slate of candidates on the park board.
I, and I also noticed on their application, the newest name, had a nice application, typed out nice, but yet, the top for the position was lighted out. And I don't understand. Did he apply for a different board?
I, I'd be happy to speak to that. He has expressed interest in joining city organizations, commissions, boards, and put in a general application previously. And then, in talking to him further, parks seemed like something he'd be interested in, and I relayed that to the mayor. So the fact that his application was changed to say parks wasn't done in light of reappointing these three positions, it was more just him putting his name in the ring. Yeah, but thanks for asking about that.
And with that, I also made one of those for the Planning and Zoning Commission, too, because he was interested in that, too. And that's sitting in the file on the back. You know, thinking about this last, however long it's been, I did some, some investigating. So in the last twenty-eight and a half years, in the last six mayors, all the way back to Mayor Duncan back in ninety-seven, there's been fifty reappointments to the park board. There's been thirty-one new appointments to the park board, thirty-two new appointments after resignations to the park board, one ineligible appointment with a new appointment, and three failed appointments. Out of that, there's been sixty-three new appointments to the park board in the last twenty-eight and a half years. So to say that I'm just doing it willy-nilly is, is not the case. I've, I've actually appointed the fewest amount of new appointments out of these last six mayors. So that's just some clarification of what has gone on in the last twenty-eight and a half years. So. Anybody else?
Councilmember Richardson has a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Speak up when you raise your hand, please, so I can see it.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
So, I know Patrick sent out the stuff earlier. I'm still on the majority of the city council before the June first deadline. And as far as I'm concerned, there never was an attempt to make anything before June first. If there was an attempt before June first, I could understand us going past. My other issue with that is, we didn't make an attempt until fifty-two days after that June first deadline. And looking at this, can this go for years? I mean, if we don't ever decide, there's nothing in there. This could go for five, ten, fifteen years, and it would just continue to go on forever. I've got, I also know that there were some issues with the attorney that they supposedly had write a letter. Is there anywhere in the budget that shows, were they paid for an attorney? Because I haven't found it yet, and, I mean, that might be Brian, that might be Casey also, I don't know. That was my other question I had. Is there anywhere in the budget?
Either one of you two want to answer that question, please?
We have not been billed for that attorney's services to prepare the letter, nor do I expect park funds to be used to pay for that attorney's services.
And also, I believe that, from what I've understood, that attorney that wrote the letter is the same law firm that I believe our city manager, Joe Warren, recommended for, to be a neutral attorney between the parks and the city council meeting that we did have. Is that correct?
This is Patrick, because I have recommended it was not Mr. Somer, it was Doug Harris, who I believe Brian had previous experience with, and who I've worked with actually on park board issues with other of his client cities.
But same law firm, right? Is that correct?
I do not believe that they are at the same firm. I do believe it's just a common last name of Harris there, but I can check. I've never worked with Doug outside of just talking to Doug.
My other question is, on the, if we're not going to make a resolution before June first, should we make a resolution to postpone it until the mayor can decide who he wants to put on this to a point? Because I feel like you should actually follow the city rules or follow the charter. And that's my biggest thing, follow the charter. We've been, we've been preached this, to follow the charter, yet here we are. It's, it's a guideline. The charter is a guideline. It's all I see, and it changes whenever we need it to change.
Patrick, you want to answer that question about making a postponement until?
I would just, again, note for the city council, the entire purpose of appointments is that mayor appoints, and the city council provides its advice and consent, just like at the federal level where the president appoints, and the senate provides its advice and consent. The terms stated for the park board and for anybody else are three years or until their successors are appointed and qualified. So it is squarely within the city council and the mayor's purview to make an appointment and then provide advice and consent, whether it's within a directory timeline or outside of it, if those positions to be filled are for expired terms.
But we never made an attempt before the June first deadline. That's my biggest thing. If you're not going to follow the charter, let's throw it out and make up our rules as we go.
So I will stop you, I will stop you there. I did make an attempt, and it took a long time to make an attempt at figuring out what I was going to do with these appointments. So to say that there was not an attempt being made before it was made is totally wrong, and you're out of order on that.
Okay. I just, I never saw a resolution.
You never saw a resolution, because I never brought a resolution forward. I was working on it. So to say I didn't make an attempt is wrong.
So, that, all that being said, let me just add, let me just add that I, I, I would have, I know, Mr. Mayor, we have had this conversation, so I, I know that you already know this, and I wasn't intending to bring this all, you know, make a huge ordeal about this, but I would encourage in the future, when we have whatever date, that we try to come up with that resolution beforehand. And I know, I, I understand there was a, this was a difficult, you know, process, whatever, but that being said, I just, I think it would help to just ease any concern that anyone, public or council, may have, just for any future appointment, you know? And I understand we're not breaking any laws, I understand we're not doing anything wrong, per se, but it just from a, you know, standing by our guidelines perspective.
Say something. So, I also have, when I did this research, I have all the ordinances that coincided with all these numbers. And there's various different dates throughout the years that people were appointed to the park board. And also, there's even times when there was vacancies in the park board for five, six, seven months. So I just wanted to point that out, too. I also have one more question, since we're still on, that if we, we as a city council received a letter from an attorney on the behest of the park board, who paid for it? If the parks didn't pay for it, who paid for it? Do we have an answer to that question?
You're talking about attorney's fees?
Yeah.
I've, I've only seen one other, and it, it did come out of Parks Fund.
So, so if nobody paid for this attorney, who paid for it? If Parks didn't pay for it, who paid for it?
Well, we haven't received a bill yet. Nobody's paid anything yet.
Go ahead, Brett.
No, I'll, at this particular point, I reserve the right to come back.
Go ahead.
Not to just drag this out any longer than it's been going on, but I actually appreciate that the mayor didn't put forward a new slate of park board appointees while we were having joint park and city council discussions about how the parks can best interact with the city council and vice versa. I, the timeline thing is, Patrick has already clarified that it is not a hard and fast rule. I appreciate what effort has been made to kind of reconcile these differences of opinions and work with people who might not agree with us. I hope the new appointees to the park board will feel confident, standing up to the council and disagreeing on things, because what we're about to demonstrate is that if you do that, you are possibly going to lose your appointment, because we will prefer to take the path of least resistance, and that makes me uncomfortable. But we do not have five votes to just keep the folks on and work out our differences. So I am hopeful that the folks that join the park board feel empowered to ask questions and push back as needed.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, my other deal on, on the park board, you assign these, you, you appoint these people to this park board to protect the parks, to protect the land. They did that, they protected it, they stood up, they, they voiced their opinion, and they're getting punished for it. That's all I got.
Do you, do you think the planning and zoning and the council didn't protect that land? Is that what you're saying?
I think they are getting punished.
Because it sure seemed like it was two, two no votes from both planning and zoning and the council.
Well, yeah, everybody on council voted no for this. So why are we punishing them if nobody, if, if city council wanted that land over there to happen? Why did nobody vote yes? Everybody voted no, and we're still.
Go ahead.
Punishing these.
You are assuming that we are all against, and that's not necessarily what this vote's about. So you're, you're, have already made your mind up that what my intent is, and you've never asked me what my intent is, and why I might vote what I might vote. So you want to operate off of your personal opinion about what my position might be. That is very disturbing to me, that you're only operating off of your position and you're not available to other people's opinion. That's all I have to say.
I just have to join in on.
I actually have called you, Brett, and talked to you.
I have to join in on that. An assumption about motivation is inappropriate and not, not even consistent with what my vote is and what, and what my reasoning is behind it, and I very much resent the implication that this is for punishment.
I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
Yes, you did call me, and I have to admit that. I will be right open, because when I, I did make a mistake, when I said you'd never, you did call me. But we didn't have a good conversation about it. I told you that I'm about feeling like we need to make some changes. I'm not against anybody. I firmly believe that the park board does a great job. I firmly believe the parks does a wonderful job. Did I not say that?
You did.
Okay.
You also told me you were going to call me back, because you had to go.
Well, that's true. I didn't, I forgot, though, I'm old.
Go ahead.
One of the things that I heard from a few different people, that I think both residents, former park board members, as well as even current park board members, is one of the things that I would encourage everyone on city council to do is attend a park board meeting, and I know we get the minutes. I know we, we can watch it online. And I know that I suspect and I expect that a number of us do that. But there's, there's, it's a different aspect coming in, talking to the people face-to-face and, and, you know, talking to our park board. So that's one of the things I just want to encourage everybody to do. I would say, you know, maybe within the next year, because as, as Ms. Andrea Cunningham would have me point out, we should not all attend the same park board. We do not want to accidentally create a quorum in such a meeting like that. But, you know, there's, I, I would just encourage you all to, you know, attend a meeting, and as, I, I get the benefit of being the liaison, so I'm attending them either way. Allison's had that same benefit, but otherwise, I would encourage you all to just stop by and, and assuming they don't have an executive session, say hi to them, you know? So that's just something that came out through my discussions.
I, too, want to address, address the retaliation aspect of this. I have been elected by the people in Belton to do what I think is best for the city. I use the parks all the time. I hook up to the parks. And I have to vote with the people in my ward who have told me what they think is best. And I can look you in the eye, every one of you, and tell you that I'm doing what the people have talked to me about, and I'm going to vote for what the people, shake your heads, what all you want to do, but I'm telling you, I've been elected to represent the people of Ward Four.
Go ahead.
Okay, on that note, I haven't had one person in favor of this park board change. So I'm doing what they want, so.
Anybody else?
Hey, I got one.
Go ahead.
Can I ask for, I know we had a little bit of confusion on the last time we voted for this, can I ask for the individual vote?
Yes, could we do a roll call, please, for clarity?
Yes.
Roll call.
Are you ready now, or would you like to wait?
I think somebody was going to.
Anybody else?
Okay, I would just say thank you to Mary, Zeb, and Rusty for your service on the park board. I know you each wanted to continue serving, and I'm sorry that's not going to be the case. And Nicholas, Shannon, and Blake, welcome to the park board in the city, and I hope that going forward, we will have some clarity that makes our interactions a lot more productive and a lot less political. I don't have the sense that the mayor is actually the one driving these reappointments to new folks. I think that came from the council, and I just. I think, um, that came from the council and I just think it's worth pointing out. I may be wrong about that, but that is the sense I get that it was not originating from the mayor and I think that's worth pointing out.
Anybody else? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember McCollum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Richardson?
No.
Davidson?
No.
Pryon?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
White?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes, motion carries. Item I, consent agenda, one motion non-abble to approve recommendations noted, any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action. Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Go ahead. Number two, okay. Anybody else, go ahead.
Number four.
Number four. Anybody else? Hearing none, we're voting on one, three and five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, motion authorizing the sale and disposition of surplus city inventory, personal property, personal property in all accordance to the section two dash nine nine one of the code ordinances, City of Belton, Missouri. Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. You're up.
Wanting a street sweeper from an auction. I mean, because our streets need to be kept up.
So, the sweet stre- sweeper that, sweet sweeper that we're selling.
Say that three times fast.
No, thank you. Hasn't run in over two years and it's sad out there and it, and it's really unfixable. The amount of money you put into it would exceed what you'd probably purchase a new one. It's just not worth investing in that piece of equipment anymore. And so, uh, at this point, it, it's, I don't know who would buy it, I don't know if they'd buy it for parks or what they'd do with it. But, uh, it's our process to, uh, try to auction it off, if nobody wants to buy it, then we'll just dispose of it.
So it's been broken the last two years. Why didn't we try to fix it instead of leaving it just set?
Uh, we have fixed it for multiple years, but sweet street, s- street sweepers have an incredible amount of parts, very small parts and hydraulics to them. And the problem with them is that as they sweep, they collect dust, the dust gets in every little crevice of that machine and it causes all the parts to fail. At a certain point you are putting, you're replacing everything that's in it. And so, instead of just replacing everything that's in it, you get to the point where you just have to purchase a new one because the parts far outweigh what the value of the piece of equipment is.
So, I guess how do we keep the streets cleaned? I mean, I drove by in the last downpour and I was through some of our trails and some other areas and some of those drains are just plugged. I mean, and you could just see the water rising, it's.
Well, those, first of all, sweepers are not designed to be, uh, necessarily leaf collectors. Uh, they're meant to collect debris, small rocks and dirt off the road. And so when people sweep leaves into the road, those sweepers are vacuum sweepers, they're trying to suck things up. They're not really designed to suck up leaves. Uh, there's actually a different piece of equipment that would do that. Um, and so, really the big help is to make sure residents aren't pushing all their leaves and grass clippings and things like that into our inlets to block them.
I mean, some of them look like they had trees coming out of them, so that's, was concerning. So, I mean, do we have a schedule of maintenance to clean those out or just?
Uh, right now we do not, it's, it's one of those pieces, it's, it's one of those things that we go when we get called, uh, to go clean something out.
So you have to wait and?
I mean, is.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead. Is, are we selling this to buy a new one or what's the plan down the road other than having a lot of rain like we had this year?
Uh, it's just a budget consideration, this next year we'll take a look at and see what we can afford.
Okay.
We have, uh, several pieces of equipment that are large pieces of equipment that need to be replaced. And so we just have to look at which one is the, when we need the most.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Maybe this was the benefit of a third party contractor that happens to be going around doing a lot of our street repair, but I've definitely seen a street sweeper recently, is that not ours?
No, that's not ours. That's someone who's doing work for us, uh, sweeping it behind themselves.
Gotcha, okay.
Anybody else? Hearing none, roll call, or, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, motion approving resolution twenty, twenty-five dash zero six five.
A resolution authorizing and directing the custodian of records of the City of Belton, Missouri to destroy certain records that have exceeded the retention requirements as set forth by, forth by the state of Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. You're up.
Um, can you please share a little bit of the process that we use for destroying the records of that magnitude?
Yes, there is a company that comes and securely collects them, takes them to their off-site shredding facility and provides me a certificate of destruction at the end.
So we don't, so, okay, so they're not, um, doing it on site, they have their own shredding structure that they take it to?
They have the option to do on site, but it's quite a bit more expensive.
Gotcha.
So we don't choose that option.
Okay, thank you.
I will say that we've also, um, planned twice a year to have this resolution come to the council to start destroying the records that are in the back and at different city facilities to make sure that we are properly disposing of things when the time comes.
For the record, I was not, uh, questioning our timeline, uh, just wanted to understand the process.
We are very excited to clean out.
Right, there's a lot of records, if anybody hasn't seen this.
More office space now too?
Uh, you wouldn't want to have your office in those spaces.
Oh, okay. But if anybody hasn't seen the pile of boxes, yeah, maze of boxes, uh, it is, uh, it, it's a, obviously a needed thing. So, I'm glad to see it's on a timeline, I'm glad to see we're handling it, just wanted to understand the process.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item J, communication from city council.
Um, just wanted to remind everybody that, uh, we're gonna have a Zoom meeting with Missouri Main Street here at the Annex on the nineteenth of August at four P M. Um, anybody who's interested in that, wants to be a stakeholder with us, uh, with Missouri Main Street, uh, should come. Uh, we're having meetings to plan some events for, uh, the Christmas holiday on Main Street. And just wanted to say the paving in the Belray area is going really well and they're doing a great job. And I had a compliment from a resident about how courteous and helpful the people doing the work are. So, thank you very much. And also to, want to thank the park board for their hard work. Um, I understand that they are very dedicated volunteers and I appreciate their service.
Councilmember McCollum?
Um, I'll, I want to echo a couple of things there, yeah, the, because I know the repaving of streets has kind of gone in a counterclockwise around the city. So we were, uh, Ward One has been benefit of that. Anyways, um, yeah, I've heard only positives from that, so I'm glad to see it's getting done and, and I just, you know, this is obviously one of the big things that is the purpose of why a city gets together and creates a government and has all this, right? So, um, just wanted to pass that along as well and echo that. Um, I also want to just, um, uh, take a second and say that if you have not, um, seen or been, or more importantly, if you haven't experienced the, uh, trail around Wallace Park, it is fantastic, you should go check it out. They just had it repaved and it is, I mean, smooth as butter now and, um, so I thank you parks for continuing to, um, you know, uh, take care of our maintenance there and around the city. Um, and as far as the T D D board goes, um, we will, we have not met yet for August, so I don't have an update yet, um, for that. And then from a Parks Board, um, Parks, well, not Parks Board, but Parks update, I have a few things. So the, um, POW MIA Memorial, uh, has been added into the center of the Rose Garden at Memorial Park. Um, so that's, uh, an awesome thing to go check out. Uh, as a reminder, we have Farmer's Market going on, um, every Thursday, four to seven P M. Uh, and we are getting close to the end of that, uh, for this year, so if you want, if you haven't been, encourage you to go to the Farmer's Market. Um, the, and speaking of the end of things, the final food truck Friday is taking place this Friday, six thirty at Memorial Park. Um, more ending of things, Doggy Dip Day at the Memorial Park Pool is August twenty-third, uh, so that's coming up. And I know that's a really popular event, people really like, um, bringing their dogs out to that kind of a once a year opportunity, so, uh, that's coming up. Um, Chalk the Walk is a event that will be, um, taking place September ninth, tenth and eleventh for, um, artists to be sharing, uh, the artist vendors, there's, there's a whole big, it's a whole big event for three, going on for three days. So, just want to remind people that's coming up. Um, the Cleveland Lake Dock is scheduled, uh, for install this week, of course, weather dependent. And, uh, the new gym, so if you haven't heard, we're gonna be getting a new gym floor, uh, uh, at High Blue. That's, um, scheduled to start install on September first. So just be aware that that will make the gym unavailable, uh, during that time period. Um, and I'll just say, if you have any questions about any signups or anything going on, um, from any, any of the stuff that the parks is doing, you can always call High Blue or check the Facebook, so, all right.
Councilmember Richardson?
I want to thank the, um, Rusty, Zeb and Mary for their service on the park board. Um, and I wish the three new that are coming in the best of luck and I know they'll do as good a job as the ones that are going out. That's all I got.
Member Lawson?
Yeah, I would just preemptively, uh, wish all the Belton Pirates, uh, good back to school on Monday and I would take the opportunity to remind folks that if school buses have their stop signs out, that applies to both directions on the street. Look out for our kiddos, that's all I have.
Councilmember Pryon?
Uh, we had a short or a regular planning commission meeting last week, um, but it looks like Matt has an excellent presentation, so I'm not gonna talk about it and steal his thunder. So that's all.
Councilmember Davidson?
I'm gonna say congratulations to D B M S I Downtown Belton Main Street. Um, they entered a poster contest, um, that was sponsored by Missouri Main Street Connections, which they are members of. And my daughter actually submitted the two photos. One of the photos of Terrace Cafe made the final, final spot. And so she will be, that picture will be featured with five others on a statewide poster for the state of Missouri. That's it.
Um, thank you for, Stephanie, for doing that, submitting that picture, that gave us, uh, a whole lot of people came up, talked to us at the training that Patty and I just went to in St. Charles. So that was nice that they, they gave us a, a leg up, I appreciate that. Um, I want to thank the park board, um, thank you for your hard work, thank you for your dedication. Um, thank you for the grass that grows on the other side of the railroad tracks. Um, I would like to also encourage you to, if you haven't ridden the railroad this year, we're running every Saturday and Sunday and we're going to way different places than we've gone before. So it's, it's very nice and it's something that we haven't done in a long time, so, that's, that's all my updates.
Let's remember White.
I'll leave that one alone. Um, we're gonna have a Ward Four meeting on Thursday at seven P M. at, uh, Memorial Station. So if you're in Ward Four, we'd love to have you, if you're not in Ward Four and you want to come, please come. Um, so, uh, that's, I believe, all I have at the moment.
All right, uh, my big thing, I want to make sure everybody knows about the I forty-nine planning meeting that's scheduled for ten, two. Uh, it's gonna be at Mill Creek Upper Elementary School in the cafeteria there, uh, from four thirty to six thirty. It's gonna be an open house style, there's gonna be no formal presentation, but they'll have all of the, everything that we've worked on to this date there to get review and, and citizen feedback. So again, uh, October the second at, uh, four thirty to six thirty, and I know it's all over the pa- with a Facebook page. Uh, I know we've had a couple of emails about paving and I know you've answered that, is there any way we can get those two documents you put out there up in front on the Facebook or up on the city webpage?
Yeah, we can.
The two documents that you sent that.
Yeah, the streets list and the resolution that has the contract, yeah.
In case anybody else has, we can direct them there to look at it, so. Uh, that's all I have, so. Anything, city manager?
Yeah, along the lines of the, the streets project that's currently underway, we have received a number of questions about it and, and the contract states that they're supposed to be done by October first, they are making good headway. Um, and so I, I would expect that for, if I'm a resident, um, and your street is on that list, uh, that is on the website and that we can make as readily available as we need to, um, that October first is when we should have that done. Also, just to point out, you might have seen some posts on social media today from throughout, from our city and other cities, it's City Hall, City Hall selfie day. It's a national day where they get out and post pictures of, of different city departments from different cities and so, it's put on by E L G L. So, you may have seen that, that's all I have.
Anybody else before we move on?
One quick question. We'll, we'll always post streets, once these bids are put out, every, every cycle, we'll post that about what is upcoming?
Yeah, I think it's good to, to let the public know what, you know, where, where their tax dollars are going and what we're spending it on and what, what projects we're doing and what progress we're making.
Okay.
Anybody else before we move on? All right. Item M, items to review and discussion, number one, Oats Bus Weekly Transportation to Senior Center.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, tonight I'm providing an update on the Oats Senior Center Transportation. This is the contract we had last year for the Tuesday and Friday transportation to the center. At the last council meeting, the senior center Mark Grant was approved. In addition to that twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, that's for the operation of the center, Mark also has awarded the city as part of that contract, up to ten thousand dollars toward the weekly transportation. Historically, this has been used to offset the cost of the Oats Bus during the week. Last year, council may recall that the Oats Bus contract significantly rose to seventy-six dollars an hour. The grant that we had been getting was no longer available for the City of Belton, so we chose to change it to Tuesday and Friday transportation only this past year. During the last twelve months, the city has spent twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars on Tuesday and Friday Oats Transportation with the grant reimbursement being four thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which is about eighteen percent is what we're getting back. In fiscal twenty-five, the Oats contract, uh, expired on June thirtieth and we received the fiscal twenty-six contract with a rate increase of eighty dollars an hour. We were anticipating that rate increase, so back in February, Peggy, the senior center coordinator, who's also here tonight, if you have questions for her, um, Peggy and I met to discuss some options of what we might do with weekly transportation. Uh, this past February, Peggy and Russ started using the Annex minivan that economic development had. We used it on Tuesdays and Thurs- and Fridays to supplement the Oats Bus so that everybody could still come on those days and we could reduce the cost that we were paying to Oats. Since the contract ended on July first of this year, Peggy and Russ have used the minivan on Tuesdays and Fridays to pick up all the seniors who were being picked up by Oats as well as the ones who we were normally picking up. Our staff calls each senior ahead of time to let them know that we're on the way, they assist them in and out of the vehicle. And with the limited capacity of the van, they are making two or three trips each Tuesday and Friday to Belton and Raymore to pick up people. Um, beginning this past week, the first of August, we were able to add Wednesdays and Thursdays back. So now we have four-day transportation using the city minivan, um, at the cost that's within our budget to supplement that. Recently, staff met with Enterprise Fleet about the possibility of leasing a bigger vehicle or at least a more senior-friendly vehicle. Uh, there's some options in the work for that, which will still be within budget. And we also talked with Mark and the, up to ten thousand dollars that's, we already been awarded to the city would be available to the city if we decided to go that route. They do have criteria for that vehicle and we need to ensure that either the minivan or this fleet leased vehicle will meet that criteria. And if there's any questions, that's the update on what we're doing for weekly transportation.
I was just gonna say, that's. I was just gonna say, that's fantastic. I appreciate that the level of service increased. Our reimbursement from Mark is increasing. Thanks, Mark. And you guys got creative to take care of these folks, our neighbors. That's awesome. Good work.
Thank you.
And remind me why the prices went up. It was because we were no longer considered rural. Is that correct?
That's correct. We found out last year that Oats had been receiving a grant to allow Belton to remain in the rural district, which was a reduced cost per driving hour. And that grant was no longer available to Belton because we all know we're not rural. So, we didn't know we were getting the grant, though. So that came as a surprise to us when I questioned, why did it go up twice as much? And that's what they told me.
So we're not using Oats at all?
We're not using Oats for the Senior Center weekly transportation. We haven't since July one, when their contract ended. Uh, we do still have the weekly shopping day with Oats because it's a separate contract.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Has this caused any, um, issues for staff in terms of now they have this extra responsibility to picking up the seniors?
I know that Peggy and Russ worked out a schedule, but I will defer that question to Peggy. Because she works very diligently to, uh, figure out how to make that work within the same amount of hours.
So to keep rest at his hours, that's why we're doing it Tuesday through Friday. He takes off Mondays. It's our slower day at the Senior Center. I'm there by myself. And it works out. He works from eight to two-thirty. We have plenty of time to get everybody to the center and home. We make sure we get them there in time for the activities. And then we take them home, kind of in the same order we brought them in. So no, there's no problem at all for us.
Awesome. And I bet they, uh, you know, I bet they, uh, people in general probably like seeing a familiar face, or at least that would be my guess. So-
Yes, yes. It has, it has worked out tremendously. Um, just being able to call them and let them know we're on our way. There wasn't, they didn't have that before.
Oh.
And so it, um, it's actually worked out really great. It's something that I'm very excited that we have decided to take over.
Okay, awesome. Glad, thank you for sharing.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
When will you have the idea about the vehicle meeting a certain criteria?
I have the criteria list. Right now, we're holding it until we have an additional meeting with the leasing company to go through their options, to see what vehicles they have available that might meet that list. The list is nothing crazy or exceptional. Um, make sure that it, it has accommodations for people to get in and out, has seat belts, has fire extinguisher, you know, nothing that would-
It is not required to have lifts.
It is not required to have a lift. Yeah, we did ask that.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very none. Uh, I don't do that now. City Council prioritization, City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You guys are receiving information you guys have already seen before. Um, we started this process, um, uh, we initially started an executive session, just to ensure that if there are any personnel conversations need to be held, we could have those conversations. But since we've worked past that portion of it, we're bringing this out to the public, so they understand what, what, what we're doing with this. Um, essentially, you'll recall, we went through a prioritization exercise, um, went through, uh, kind of a survey, uh, the council did, of certain city services. So let's see if we can go through this. Maybe. So the, the rationale behind this, uh, work session item is to make sure that we're working together. Sorry, technical difficulties. Give us one second. Fair enough, easy enough. All right. So we started with a survey, you might recall, um, and we essentially, I gave you guys a list of thirty-six aspects of city management and, and city services. Um, that's, that's definitely not probably all-inclusive, and some things were combined, uh, for brevity's sake. I know it's hard to say thirty-six is for brevity's sake, but, um, I generally, I asked, you know, well, generally speaking, how well is the city performing in each area? Um, we had the thirty-six areas. They, it was a very simple, crude survey. It wasn't designed to be super scientific, other than the fact to just give us some, some, uh, big areas to, to focus on. And, uh, so we asked you to rate whether it was good, the current, uh, current city performance, whether it was average, whether it was poor, or whether you were unsure. Um, also, with, with those poorer grades, we asked you to explain why you gave a poor grade. So we had, at least had that kind of a feedback. Um, and generally, maybe not, there we go. Um, like, like I said, uh, after each, after each rating, rating either good, good, average, or poor, we, uh, you know, we, we asked you to tell us. Um, so after we did that survey, and we got the results of, okay, whether we were doing good, average, or poor in certain areas, also took those same thirty-six areas and asked you to pick, okay, what are your top ten? If you had to say, okay, as a council member, someone representing the city, um, someone elected to represent the, the folks, uh, that, that live here, which would be the top ten areas in your opinion? Um, and then asked you to pick the top five and the top two. Again, designed to help the staff understand what the expectations and, and the priorities are from the council. And so again, purpose, identify council priorities. And, um, most importantly, what I'm, what was hoping to get from this was to make sure that we can bring staff and council into alignment on the needs and desires of the council. Um, as you guys are elected by the public to represent them, we wanted to make sure that we, as a staff, um, aren't, you know, aren't just getting so busy and, and doing our own thing as, and knowing that, that we are providing these different services. It's always good for us to step back and look and say, okay, well, what is the, what does the public think of this? And, and how important is it to them? Um, examples of the areas that were included in this, these lists, just for the public to see, you know, overall customer service, resident experience, organizational strategy and leadership, economic development, financial stewardship, you know, police, fire, E M T., public works, which would encompass street sidewalks, et cetera. So, I mean, those are just seven of the thirty-six areas, but that just gives everybody an idea of, of what was included. Um, so I, I stand up here because we have a summary of results, a brief summary of results, and we also took your guys' data, and I shared it with, with the department heads, um, so we could start trying to create some potential action plans. And so tonight, I'm hoping to show, share with you some of those plans and then get further feedback. Uh, four areas tied for the top two priorities, um, as far as they were identified as priorities by the, by the most council members. Overall customer service, resident experience is one, police, fire, EMS, and public works, those, those, all four were tied as, as top two priorities. So when you say, what were the top two priorities, uh, for the city from each of the nine of you, you know, those four had the most votes. The most top five votes, when you say, what are the top five services? Um, and top two would be included in your top five, obviously. Overall customer service, resident experience, police, fire, EMS, public works, economic development, water, wastewater, stormwater management were included. Um, and then for top ten votes, uh, overall, the most top ten votes, again, the same top four that you're seeing, you're seeing economic development, and you, you add community development, and you add parks in there. So strong scores and importance, so there were some areas that both had high scores, uh, as far as were a priority, um, and were also scored well, as far as the way the city's delivering that service. Fire, EMS, police, wastewater, community development, and parks were the, were at the very top of that list. Um, and so now that we have those results and, and, and the spreadsheets that I've given out to the, to the council, easily, we can share that with the public. They're public documents. We're, I mean, I'm, I'm glad to share it, happy to share it. It's a big document. There's a lot of data points in there. It, it can be very overwhelming looking at it, especially out of context. But, uh, by all means, it's a public document, so we, that is shareable. Um, so staff identified, uh, some focus areas. Neighborhood improvement was one, council communications, resident experience, customer service, and H R recruiting, retention, employee engagement, as, as some areas, uh, that we could improve based on your guys' scores. You wanna, you wanna, yeah, I'm glad to interrupt and take-
Well, I, I was just gonna ask a question. So staff identified, based on our scores, they weren't given this exercise.
No, they weren't asked to go through the exercise. We wanted to get council's feedback on this. And so it wasn't, uh, we didn't want to, you know, shade it with our own opinions. We wanted to say, okay, well, there's gotta be a reason for this, for the scores as is. So let's try to focus on some things that we can do to maybe help you guys in, in some of these areas.
Thanks.
Yeah. So one of the action plans, neighborhood improvement, um, we came up with some ideas, like some neighborhood-specific events. And you're gonna hear some of the, some, actually more later on today, from some of the community development, uh, type of, of things. Um, so neighborhood-specific events, um, like a roll-off dumpster day for, or dumpster week for folks, um, connect residents in need with resources, either nonprofit or city-led, uh, actual city beautification plan. So, and we also identified some timelines and some deadlines as to when we could try to get some of these things, uh, put in place. Um, another one regarding council communication is maybe some department-specific quarterly reports. You guys can understand what's going on in each of the departments on a more regular basis. Um, resident experience, we, you know, again, quarterly development reports, you know, not just department, but development as far as what's going on in the city, maybe, uh, uh, what new, new development, whether it's infrastructure development or, or new residential, commercial, those types of development. And then maybe even some pop-up events where we can, you know, interact more with the public, you know, things that may be festivals that we have here in the, in the community. Um, another action plan was, uh, we have this My Belton app. It is growing in, in popularity. Um, it's, uh, I feel like it's doing a very good job of, of, I've had a lot of good resident feedback on, on the successes that it is, it has brought, um, as far as an easy, quick way for folks to ask questions, uh, report things, request services. Um, and so maybe some quarterly reports on the My Belton app. That's some, that's stuff that we can provide to you and to the public pretty consistently. And then also the review of My Belton activity to ensure that the actual completion, you know, we, we have these stats that we're keeping, and you know, um, we feel like we're having a, a good success rate, but we want to make sure that we're, you know, that the completion of, of the ask is, is the intended completion by, for the residents. Um, another action plan for H R recruiting, retention, employee experience is, you know, doing, you know, more and, and more regular employee recognition, maybe at, here at the council level. I know that we've been doing, uh, some, you know, certain milestone, um, years of service. I know we've done some of that and, and some key, and, you know, long-term service retirements. We've, we've done some of that. But maybe, I know this is a cool idea we could steal from parks that they're doing, is, you know, they, they have this, these quarterly employees of the, your employees of the quarter, and they share it with the park board. And maybe, you know, maybe we can bring up some of these employees from different areas and our, and different departments to the council, and at least get some public. And it'd take five minutes at the beginning of a council meeting to say, hey, here's our employees of the quarter, or whatever, and, um, and, and give them more, more recognition. I think it's, it's worthwhile. Um, customer service success stories, uh, we do, uh, we fulfill a lot of requests for services, questions. Um, and we do a lot of those, and they're done to completion, and they're done satisfactory, and, and we, you, the residents getting the end result that they're requesting. Um, but you don't necessarily hear about those. You hear about the things that go wrong. You hear about the things that we don't do well some, on occasion, or, or where we can't help out. And I think that we can do a better job of telling those success stories on, on, on our website, on social media potentially. Um, and then doing some of the departmental social events for the entire organization. I know we talked about doing a situation where each department would take, you know, uh, for a quarter or a month or whatever, they could have like a, um, and I use this term loosely because there would be no, no alcohol involved, like a happy hour, like a, an employee happy hour, um, where they invite, you know, the other employees from other departments to come see their department and what they've got going on, and just kind of another chance for folks to interact across departments. Um, I think one of the biggest successes we've been having with H P O, with the Belton Advantage, is, is that interdepartmental, um, you know, connectivity between employees and, and communication between departments. And so we can just take that to the next level by doing, in doing something like that. So again, most of these things, we think we can get implemented by the end of this year, so in Q four of two thousand twenty-five. So those are five action plans that the staff came up with. You guys have had some time now to work, to, to, to review the data. If there are some other areas that you would like us to consider, obviously, I'd, I'd love to entertain any conversation we have now, but there's no deadline necessarily to this. If there's something you can see based on the data that, that we could do better to help the council as a whole, um, we're, obviously, we have open eyes and open minds and open ears. So, any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, a couple of things I really like. The employee recognition at the council level, or just regularly shouting out our employees and the good work they do. Um, along those lines, sharing on social media success stories of not just employees, but of residents. People like to see themselves, they like to see themselves reflected back. I think there's, um, an opportunity to just, I don't know, community ties our social media beyond just the updates, which are super appreciated, but just that mix. And I think Aaron Smollett, correct, is doing a, a great job. And I've noticed an uptick in our online content, at least what I see on Instagram.
Absolutely.
Um, and then lastly, for the beautification, I know, Matt, we're gonna get to your deck, but I would love to see like a yard of the month, because there's this house that's second and Cedar that is just outstanding. So again, the kind of communitization, um, element, I think that kind of stuff is, is really powerful, actually. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Go ahead.
I would encourage, um, now that we're having this discussion, you know, publicly, if you will, uh, I would encourage any, uh, anyone from the public, if they have anything they would like to add, or anything they think might, they see up here that might be amiss, or, or is not, or the opposite, they say, man, that's really great. Yeah, we'd like to see more of that, too. I would encourage the public to also weigh in and give us some feedback. Um, 'cause I, you know, there's always room for improvement, always. Um, and, uh, so anyways, I, you know, we're, we're doing based on what we do hear from, but if anybody sees something else that they would like to add, I would, I would love to hear more.
Go ahead.
Sorry, that made me think of something. Do we have any plans to do another E T C community survey in the next year, eighteen months?
Uh, I think we do need to do one fairly soon, yes. I think it would be worthwhile. We, we, we were planning to do one, uh, there'd be a normal, normally you want to do them every two to three years, a community-wide E T C survey. We, we would have been due to do one this year, potentially, but we've had a couple of, from the, the Parks Master Plan, from our own comprehensive plan. We've had some surveys going out recently, and we, and we felt, we were worried about the residents in the community getting, you know, survey fatigue a little bit.
Yeah.
And so we kind of thought we'd set aside for just a little bit and let it kind of subside. And then, and, but yes, we do want to keep, keep those consistently every few years to, to keep, keep measuring how the, the public's viewing what we're doing.
It'd be cool if we could tailor it to mirror this, or just these same concepts put to the residents, kind of what Alex was getting at, I think could be cool.
A key component to those is to, to try to get them consistent from survey to survey, so you actually have measurable results that mean something. You can see where you're getting better or getting worse at certain areas. But there's definitely some room for tweaking and tailoring from survey to survey.
And I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Eke here, but, um, I believe we had, if I remember correctly, we had discussion about sending out the survey and specifically stopped and didn't do that because of the survey fatigue, but also there was some kind of, if I remember correctly, there was a scam going around or something. We wanted to make sure there wasn't, uh, confusion with our survey with some kind of scam that was going on or something of that nature. Am I misremembering that?
There, so we had, council had approved the draft survey, and we had that in E T C's hands. And essentially, at the same time, then, the comprehensive plan in parks and public works through, um, the Safe Streets For All program. So all three of those surveys had hit at the same time. And there was on Facebook, um, a link that had been floating around there that was a, I don't want to call it a scam necessarily, but not affiliated with the city that was going out. And so I think a decision at that time was made, like, we're gonna hold off, at least through this budget cycle, until at least later this year or next budget year, that we can do a true community service, kind of city service-focused survey, also through E T C.
So in theory, we're ready to go. We just need to make sure we pick a good time.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Well, I, I'll, I'll only thing I'll add is, obviously, may, you know, everything looked good in my opinion of what you're trying to tackle there and whatnot, but, you know, I reserve the right to add or, or change that opinion if, uh, you know, something else gets brought up.
The hope is that you find some value in what we've done and see, and see some alignment and some of the priorities that we're taking to ensure that we're doing the work you guys are hoping we are getting done, in addition to the regular, you know, day-to-day services we're, we provide.
Anybody else? All right, thanks. Item three, Jerry and Menos Auto, special use permit and final plat.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, this is for an application that staff received, um, last month for a special use permit and a final plat for Jerry and Menos Auto. Uh, they're located at two fifteen North Scott, and they have requested to add a new, approximately twenty-five hundred square foot, um, workshop addition on the southeast corner of their property, the backside of their property, along North Oak Street, which is an unimproved city street. Um, the application was presented to the Planning Commission last week at a public hearing, um, after which, um, the, nobody spoke in favor or against the proj- The application was presented to the Planning Commission last week at a public hearing, after which the nobody spoke in favor or against the project. And that will be coming forward to council at the next meeting. This would allow them to make that expansion, which this is one of the businesses that has been waiting to make this expansion for a number of years. They've had it in the plans, but due to the previous overlay, they were unable to make that expansion. As part of this, there was quite a bit of discussion at the Planning Commission, some concerns of the the property maintenance issues on that property. And all of that has been built into the approval process, which was part of the overlay updates was to make sure that if we're allowing these businesses to expand that they are making those property maintenance improvements concurrently with that development update. So additional property maintenance updates will be made within a year of the special use permit approval, should it be approved by the city council.
Questions? Go ahead.
I guess I'm, so there was, like you said, some good discussion from planning, the Planning Commission on this topic. I'm a little concerned that it took them coming to us saying, hey, we want to do this new thing for us to be making sure they're keeping up on maintenance they should already been keeping up on.
Yeah, that that was one of the, an issue with a number of these properties along North Scott. They have been in this condition for, some of them for decades. So that's one of the things with the North Scott overlay is to help get those incremental improvements that need to be made. But that's also part of the, some of the neighborhood improvement things we're going to talk about with the, one of the other work session topics.
I mean, so just to, we just saw from your presentation, right, beautification, and I know it's coming up. But I I I hear it a lot and I hear, you know, us, I I just, I'll stay, I'll stick with that. I hear that a lot, whether it's North Scott or anywhere else in the city. And I guess I I sincerely hope and want them to improve their property. I mean, that's great, especially if their business is doing well, I mean, that's small business is fantastic. But I have some concerns that we are, say, we're doing what we're saying we're going to do. And I guess I'm looking at you, City Manager, just because I I'd say this is not, I don't want it to be specific to Jerry and Menos. I'm but I'm just saying I have some concerns that we're we're doing what we're saying.
Yeah, we've been trying to take an incremental approach because it's really difficult to be heavy handed with business owners and saying, hey, you have to come up to a certain standard. You weren't first forced to meet it for so many years. And and the best approach we've found is is to work with them. And when they have something like this, then it's easier to get them excited about working with us, if that makes any sense. And so, yeah, we're not ignoring the fact that that businesses might be be run down and not up to code. But we also, you know, trying to take a reasonable approach to to not, you know, be too heavy handed of as, you know, as to not be business friendly.
Okay.
Several years ago, when I first came on the council, they put in an application to do improvement. But they were told no because it didn't meet the North Scott overlay, back the original one. And so they've just kind of, and they they had started some stuff, they had to tear, if my memory serves me, but I'm old. I think they even started stuff, they had to tear it down because it didn't meet the overlay. And so they've just kind of waited. And then when they heard that the things were changing, then they started to kind of like, oh, maybe we want to, because they couldn't do anything. The overlay would stop them completely. And so my understanding is that when that changed, they started to make some changes into what they wanted to do with their property. So I'm hoping that they follow through with what they want to do.
Well, again, it's not necessarily on them that I'm having this discussion, right? It's more about on us, so, but, okay.
Anybody else? All right, thanks. Item four, you're still up, beautification plan.
Yeah, the next thing before you is the beautification plan that staff within multiple multiple departments have been working on since last fall. So there, we didn't know until we started looking into this that there actually was a beautification plan that was adopted by resolution back in two thousand fourteen as an informal guide to improve community community aesthetics. It was primarily focused on some public property, but also private properties, particularly storm water detention areas within developments. We took a revisit of that and we've been working with Economic Development Parks and Public Works on creating this new plan that we're going to present tonight, but we'll also provide a draft of that to council as well. And then hopefully present that to you for formal adoption by resolution next month. Jennifer Hernandez, our city planner, put together all of the designs for the plan. And then Jared Eves and Pablo Marquez in Public Works helped put together the landscaping plans for the beautification plan. Those are the Public Works staff that have been continuously maintaining and replanting the one hundred and sixty third street islands over the last several months. So we came up with some of the goals for this beautification plan, which are on the screen. First is to improve the urban tree canopy, we're trying to improve community aesthetics, implement environmental education signage. And a lot of that is, especially if we're going to do native plantings, sometimes during certain times of the year, those may look a little bit weedy. But that is by design to help them make it through the year. Designate areas for art and public spaces, establish a unique planting list for Belton, increasing visual recognition through wayfinding signage, which again, this is all kind of inter multi departmental, so that's something that Economic Development is working with us on. And then implement sustainable maintenance practices. One of the challenges with a lot of our current landscaping is it needs regular maintenance. One of the things that you're seeing right now on one hundred and sixty third street is the installation of irrigation to help reduce some of that maintenance. But also just installing more native plants that may only need to be maintained a couple of times a year. With that, we created an overall mission statement, which is to provide a vibrant, sustainable and walkable community through intentional beautification, engaging signage, public art and a cohesive community identity. We built this plan along, as Joe mentioned, there have been a number of surveys over the last couple of years, including the comprehensive planning survey and the Parks Master Plan. So within that, a significant percentage of residents had concerns in wanting to improve the appearance of commercial corridors, supporting the investment in streetscaping, including lighting, seating and landscaping. And then just in general, wanting a more attractive city, specifically city entrances through landscaping signage and improvements. And same for the Parks Master Plan, there were some high priorities with natural areas and outdoor public art, which this all feeds into as well. We did take a look at some of the existing medians around the city that are maintained by the city. And some of the observations we had that community benefit was the lowest scoring section, so that was just in general. Does this maintenance contribute positively to the community? Lack of landscaping, current areas have very little community benefit and the established areas, once they are established, have generally been well maintained. So these are some of the improvements that are proposed by the plan. We have some high level areas that we're looking at, monument areas, which those are the entrances to the city. Major intersections and boulevards, that's one hundred and sixty third street, Marquee Parkway, South Mullen Road. Commercial corridors, which include fifty eight highway, Main Street and North Scott. Park entry areas for unified signage and landscaping that help build that that image as you're entering into the park from the main corridors. And then art areas, which is something that we would be working with the Public Art Commission on. So the first phase has already been budgeted. In the FY twenty six budget, we have twenty thousand dollars for additional wayfinding signage and then seventy five thousand dollars for beautification through landscaping. Some of that's being expended right now with the updates on the one hundred and sixty third street corridor. We're not entirely sure, we're working with Public Works on exactly how much is left. Once that's done, to see, figure out what other medians can be done along that corridor, as well as along the Marquee Parkway extension. As part of this, we have a new design that we've put together for, with the different planting types and the planting list for those. Our goal is to have a relatively uniformed planting list, so all the corridors in the city are, when you drive on it, you know you're in Belton based on the landscaping design that's on there, as well as the monument signs that would be proposed. So as I mentioned, there's seventy five thousand dollars budgeted currently, we're working to see how far that goes. And then obviously, we would come forward if with support of the beautification plan for future budget to see what the next phase would be for those funds. We have already shared this with the Planning Commission last week. And then we will be sharing this with the Public Arts Commission and the Park Board next week as well. Since all of, all these boards and commissions should have some input on this, because it does impact their areas. And then we have some graphics there of our planting list with some of the visuals of the various species that are proposed within the landscape designs. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Go ahead.
On. So when we have this plan in place, the idea, it sounds like, I'm just looking for confirmation, I guess, is that we will hopefully have a lot less of redoing of whatever it be, whether it's a median or whether it's a, you know, a general public space. We won't have to be constantly replanting or redoing or anything of that nature. Hopefully, we'll see some consistency, is that some of the idea here?
Yeah, one of the challenges that we've had, especially along the one hundred and sixty third street corridor, is that half of those are annuals that have to regularly be replanted. Pretty much, we are focusing on perennial plants that will come back year after year with minimal maintenance. Annual plants may be planted at, like in front of a monument sign or around public art. But those areas are going to be regular, more regularly maintained. So overall, the maintenance costs should decrease with this and the need to continuously replant them should also go down. We've also worked with Public Works on selecting species that are more drought tolerant, as well as salt tolerant. That's a big problem in winter when the salt gets into the medians that they stress the plants, potentially kill the plants. So we've selected hardier plants that should last for for many years without the need to replace those.
The other thing I'd like to see in that, I'm glad to see, my 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 follow up here is that there's follow up. And so I'm glad to see that there's a resolution that we would adopt this. But I'd like to see in that resolution that it needs to be adopted every year by the council. That way, we don't end up in a situation where we didn't know we even had a beautification plan. And we can ensure that, you know, we're sticking to our, we're we're doing what we're saying, that kind of aspect. I guess that's my theme tonight.
Yeah, and that that was the goal of making this a multi department plan, is that all the departments that are participating in it.
Yeah, it sounds great.
That we're all on the same page with that.
I wasn't, yeah, it sounds great. I'm, I just would like to see us, personally, anyway, I'd like to see us bring that forward every year so we can have a reminder of what's going on. And if we need to change, understandably, we can change, but at least then we have, we have it not forgotten about. And then and then one more time, you mentioned names, but can you get, couldn't, we were talking about recognizing staff. So can you give those names again, of those people that have worked on this?
Yeah, so Jennifer Hernandez, our city planner, is the one who put all the the graphics together. Jared Eves and Pablo Marquez with Public Works put, they've been doing all the install. So they were a big help in helping select the plants. They also have a background working for a previous landscaping nursery business. So they know all about the different plant types and what's going to work. We also had Kevin Feeback participate with Parks. Greg Rocos, Mike Iki. We had Tyler Farrow, who's our, one of our, was our neighborhood improvement officer, now a building inspector, who also serves on the tree board for the city. So quite a bit of just general mix of people that could help bring this all together. Thanks.
Go ahead.
I'm a little afraid just to ask this question because it is low on the implementation phase one. But the Mullen Roundabout, is there a industry standard or recommendation between community planning and public works of what is the best way to landscape a roundabout?
So if you noticed in the description of who is on this committee, they did mention my name, but I haven't gone to many of the meetings because engineers have stayed out of the landscaping.
Okay.
And I think that was a really good decision I made to put our landscapers on the committee and not have me on it. And so I'm sure that they're going to come up with a plan on how they want to landscape the roundabout.
Okay, and we're looking for the industry recommendation, not the Facebook most popular option or most maligned option.
We've seen many roundabouts of that size elsewhere in the metro that have had landscaping and public art without any issues.
Great.
So they're not, they're not the small roundabouts that are on fifty eight, these are much larger, there shouldn't really be that that kind of a conflict through those.
This is going to be one of our flagship roundabouts, okay.
Go ahead.
I would like, I I'd like, I looked over the the list of plants and I would like to know if all these are car hit tolerable. So when they come off the interstate, are they going to be so flexible that they'll just spring back up, so?
I don't know if there's a such thing as that.
I heard salt tolerable and drought tolerable, but I didn't hear car hit tolerable.
Let's be optimistic.
Tolerant.
Anybody else? All right, perfect. Item five, neighborhood improvement process and cleanup day.
All right. So this kind of builds off a little bit of, I gave a presentation for a work session a month or two ago about the building improvement process and the permitting inspection process. There's, there's always a lot of ongoing concerns about neighborhood improvement and kind of ebbs and flows in terms of, you know, the the amount of concerns and complaints that we receive on that. Just a little bit of a high level of the neighborhood improvement process. We do have an, our entire process and helpful handouts on our website. We have our common code violations for both residential and commercial properties. And then we also have our flow chart of, you know, exactly how the neighborhood improvement process works from a code enforcement standpoint. Over the last couple of years, we've made some changes to our neighborhood improvement process based on a lot of feedback that we've received from residents, property owners, council members. And some of that included going, switching to courtesy door hangers is our primary source of initial notification and contact with with code violations. And that started back in the fall of two thousand twenty three. In last October, we launched the Central Square portal, as well as the my BeltNAP. Both of those have helped us to better streamline and track code violations, both internally and what's visible to the public. And then we started rental inspections in January of this year. And I'll I'll mention that the rental inspections are primarily conducted by our neighborhood improvement officers, not our building inspectors, because they are also certified to be able to do interior property maintenance inspections. So some of our priorities over the last couple of years have been to improve our relationships with residents and property owners by helping to collaborate with them on the improvements that are needed to be made to their property. And then tackling nuisances and property maintenance issues on properties that have had longstanding nuisances. So as Councilmember McCallum mentioned, with the North Scott property, that's, that's an example of one of those where we may have twenty or thirty years of blight or property maintenance issues on this property. How do we tackle those? And so those take us a lot longer to address. But on a number of situations, we've been seeing some progress on those. So with areas of success, an estimated sixty percent of our courtesy notices do lead to an abatement by the property owner or the resident without having to go to an official notice. One of the things that has been very costly in both time and money has been sending violation notices. So just sixty percent of those being addressed saves us over ten thousand dollars in postage every year. For any kind of violation notice, we automatically have to send one certified mail copy plus a regular mail copy. And then if if it is not an owner occupied property, there's also the same, two letters will go out to tenants that are on the utility bills, registered agents, property managers. So it's not uncommon for rental. So it's not uncommon for rental properties to have five or six different letters going out. So I mean, you're talking about $50 plus just on postage for one violation notice. The My Belton app has definitely helped improve our communication between our neighborhood improvement officers and citizens. They're able to communicate back and forth through that app and get regular updates on where things are in the process. And our officers have also developed a positive working relationships with residents and property owners, which we, I think has led to a cleanup of properties that have had longstanding history of code violations or expensive abatements. Our goal is also try to get our abatement cost down by working with property owners on getting that debated before we have to step in and pay a contractor to do that work. We do have definitely some areas for continued improvement. One of the things with the My Belton app, it's been a great, it's been a great app for residents. But the number, the volume of complaints and concerns on code enforcement that come in there on a daily basis does tend to overwhelm the officer's ability to just go out and do proactive enforcement, which is what they had typically focused on previously. So there are some days where they're, especially on Mondays, when there's a lot of complaints that may come in over the weekend, they may spend their entire Monday just responding to those, which takes them away from driving elsewhere throughout the city to, to proactively find those violations. We, we do have some challenges with residents and property owners, our neighborhood improvement officers trying to work with people and giving them the benefit of the doubt that they are working on making these fixes to their properties and giving them extensions to help make that work. There's been a number of times that that has not played out as we had hoped with the property owner, the resident. And so those abatements or those extensions tend to lead to things not getting addressed in a timely manner. So that's one of the things that we do need to work through. And then, as I mentioned, the modifications to communication methods, especially our coordination between My Belton and eTrack, which is our online portal, those two programs don't necessarily work in tandem. But because they're having to enter all their information through the eTrack it portal and then go and basically relay the same information through My Belton, they're sometimes duplicating that work. And so one thing that we have talked about is the eTrack it program, the eTrack it portal is public. And so through the My Belton app, there's the opportunity there to just direct residents. You know, once a case has been created, they can then follow it through the eTrack it. I know there's some level of inconvenience for that, having to monitor two different programs. But that is definitely would cut down on the amount of duplication of work that our officers have to do.
Is, is there a, is there a possibility to put a hyperlink within a reply back within the My Belton app?
Yes, I believe that's, that is a, an option within there.
Because it could reduce, you know, if I, if I go into the My Belton app, I get a response, I put in a service request, I get a response from the city and there's a link that says, hey, you can see updates here. And I click on that link and it just takes me to it. That's fairly seamless, even though it is technically two different places, just an idea that, since you said that.
Yeah. So that, that is something that we will be working on and, and helping put together kind of a communication sheet on exactly how you can go in there and search through those and, and see the progress of any code violation that you are tracking. So with that, there's a number of proposed changes that we are proposing to make and would appreciate any council feedback on these. This first, first couple of sets of changes are things that we can do within the next six months without any change, without any budget amendments or anything. These are things that we can do with the staffing and the capabilities that we have on staff. We would continue to do our, our regular 10 day notice for nuisances, high weeds and grass and other items that are impacting health, life, safety. So those would be an immediate notice in addition to going ahead and providing a door hanger as a courtesy. But in addition to the courtesy, we would automatically send out the violation just so it's already in progress. We would propose to change our notice period for property maintenance and zoning violations to 60 days. The reason for that is right now the code is, is a, is a minimum of 10 days and in standard, we just always do 10 days. We have been doing 60 days for, you know, property maintenance, for repaving parking lots and things like that because we know it's not realistic that somebody's going to get a paving contractor within 10 days of getting a notice. So that 60 day is designed to reduce the number of extension requests that we get due to the availability of contractors and materials on, on most property maintenance, because you have to get a contractor out to do that work and they're typically booked out weeks in advance, you're not going to get that resolved in 10 days. So a lot of those get automatically extended. And so it, it's easier for us to just have that one time notice rather than the continuous back and forth with a property owner on multiple extensions. With that, we would also cut back on the number of extensions to just say one time extension. So if somebody didn't get the work done within 60 days, but they can prove to us that it's in the works either by receipts, contracts or bids to have those improvements made, we would grant a one time extension, another 60 day extension for that. Any additional extensions beyond that would then fall to the Assistant City Manager to review that and see if it is warranted. So it helps streamline that way. There's a level playing field. I think there are some concerns that certain property owners are getting more extensions than somebody else. And so just in an opportunity or an opportunity to be fair and clear and transparent with this, this is what we would propose to do. So everybody's on that same level playing field. And then, of course, failure to comply by the due date would result in the ticket or citation, which is what we have done historically. And then abatement if it is high weeds, grass or junk trash debris. And then I will mention that in the, on some of these slides, I've, I've put goals that directly relate to the comprehensive plan that are within the comprehensive plan. So one of the goals for neighborhood improvement is to continue to build capacity and utilize community-based strategies to further maintain an aesthetically appealing, clean and safe community. So all of these ideas that we have collaborated with the neighborhood improvement team on bringing forward tonight is trying to meet those goals of the comprehensive plan. Some additional proposed changes, I already mentioned this, but the high weeds grass would automatically result in a violation. And some of that's because we've left door hangers before on a, a property that has that and then they don't mow. And so then it's another 10 days before we can get that out. And so that can, especially spring and summer, with the grass growing as quickly as it can. I mean, we could, we could see grass two feet tall before we're able to get the ability to actually abate that. We're also going to make modifications to both our courtesy and our notice letter to remain friendly and approachable while still upholding the intent of the code. I think some of our language within our violation notices have got, are a little softer than they were several years ago. And so we're going to be a little bit more firm within there. It, it kind of leaves the option of making a, an extension request almost like it's a guarantee. And we don't want to make, we don't want to make people believe that that's a guarantee because we, we really do need these issues addressed. Additionally, for, for code amendments, this would likely be a larger code amendment that we would need to make to our nuisance section. But currently, only one notice is required to be sent annually during the growing season for high weeds and grass. So when we send those out in April or May, even if you mow after that, it doesn't clear that violation. It's still a violation throughout the growing season. So if we go by the property again in August and it's over seven inches, we will abate that. We would like to propose an amendment that we apply that to other nuisances. We have a lot of repeat offenders where, you know, examples, a, a vehicle that continues to park in the grass. They get a violation notice, we come back at recheck, it's gone. Technically, that violation has been abated and then we have to start that clock all over again. And so we've, we've found that there's a lot of violations on some properties where we'll send out the same notice two, three, four times a year. And so we want to build that into the code to make that more likely to be upheld in the municipal court. Some additional updates that are still within the existing budget that we can do with our staff. We've already talked about the comprehensive plan, but one of the goals was conducting a windshield survey to assess the current status of neighborhoods and monitor progress long term. That is something, looking at a few other cities around the state, that's something that they focus on in the winter months when the high weeds and grass season, which is over half of our code violations. So that would give us some time to start that process this fall. And essentially, it would likely be more than just the neighborhood improvement team. It could be building inspectors when they don't have inspections. It could be our city planner or myself as well, since it is part of the comprehensive plan to go out and document properties throughout the city of what those current property maintenance issues are. So we're tracking those and we know exactly what properties that we need to pursue improvements for. A creation of a community resources guide, this is one of the things that we hear a lot from residents is that they don't have the resources to make these improvements. There are a number of organizations in the community that may be able to provide them with assistance, either financially or with volunteers. So helping to pull that resource guide together for people who are financially or physically are not able to make those improvements. Neighborhood Dumpster Day is something that we are looking at doing. We'd like to start a pilot dumpster day in the Summeron Trails neighborhood. That has been where our neighborhood improvement officers believe that there's the greatest opportunity right now. And a lot of that is because since much of the neighborhood has carports, there's a lot of junk trash debris that has been a code violation in the past that could be addressed there. And then prior to that, we would do a windshield survey of that neighborhood anyway to notify the property owners of the items that they should address and then give them the opportunity to come to the dumpster day to, at, at the city's expense to be able to assist them with that. And those costs for that dumpster day, it, it's likely a couple of thousand dollars to do that. However, we have that within our abatement budget, within the neighborhood improvement budget. So that is something that we would be able to afford under this year's budget.
Matt, one of the things that on the, on the Code Advisory Committee, we talked about this quite a lot. That it wouldn't, that it wouldn't be sitting there for days and days and days. It would be very prescribed times for that dumpster to be there and very specifically for the neighborhood, correct?
Yeah, we're really just pushing that out to the neighborhood through door hangers or flyers that would go to the neighborhood.
And we also talked about people that wanted to volunteer with just their trucks for those. Because we, we mentioned that at the Code Advisory Committee, that a lot of those folks don't have a means to even get it to a dumpster. So that was one of the things that we were going to try to address too.
Yeah. Yeah, we can potentially put together some volunteers for that to help, help with people who don't have the ability to get the junk trash debris from their house to the dumpster. We're planning on doing that at Marquee Park in early October. So we wanted to get council's feedback on that before we officially get with the dumpster company on getting that finalized. No, it would likely arrive on a Friday. The event would be on a Saturday and they would haul it off on a Monday. Our neighborhood improvement officers are very interested in continuing to participate in additional community engagement activities throughout the city. So they will be joining community, the planning team at the Fall Festival. We will be at the Fall Festival for the Unified Development Code Update. But they would also like to be there to just engage the community on any neighborhood improvement opportunities or concerns that they have. Neighborhood improvement branding is something else that we are looking at. We have kind of a draft logo there at the bottom. And we would like to add that logo to notices and decals for vehicles. That's been something that our, our team has asked for is to help just get people more comfortable with the neighborhood improvement team, feel free to communicate with them. I mean, our goal is to try to make the, improve the aesthetics of the community and address a lot of these violations. But people also need to feel comfortable with our team, that they can approach them to make that happen. And then these are the items where additional funding would be needed to, to make these happen. And so obviously, these would be future potential budget requests for the FY27 budget. One of the items there is create a neighborhood beautification program. It expands volunteerism and enhance civic engagement. That's directly from the comprehensive plan. So some of those ideas would, you know, we're piloting the Summeron Trails Dumpster Day. We would like to include other neighborhoods in that in the future. West Belton was the second neighborhood that we would be looking at. But potentially doing just a general cleanup day citywide. That obviously takes a lot of, a lot of volunteers and a lot of organization and coordination to make that happen. So before we would be able to do something like that, we would want to recruit a volunteer team to assist with those efforts. So that would include churches, schools, community organizations, businesses and fraternal organizations that could help volunteer time and staff on that.
I would just throw out, there could be a good connection with the Belton Youth Commission. Not saying we want the high schoolers to come and do all the volunteer work, but just for them to see kind of this in action. And if the council shows up and, you know, we've got our assigned buddy, that could be really cool. That could be cool.
Plus, unless something's changed, high school kids are generally usually looking for volunteer hours for a variety of different, you know, activities they're part of. So. I mean, I'm not saying that they need to do all the work. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, that is a population that is typically looking for volunteer work.
Are you sure?
Well, maybe things changed since when I was in high school.
No, I mean, are you sure you're not asking them to do all the work?
No, okay, okay. I, I guess I need to clarify. Mine was not a punishment. As Councilman Pepper Lawson said, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying the opposite. When you're part of different organizations, when you're trying to get time for different organizations that will be on your resume for going to college and different aspects of that, you, that typically involves volunteer time. That's what I was referring to. Thank you for the clarification. Yes, I am an Eagle Scout, so that's, okay. All right. So I was, I'm, I am an Eagle Scout with the boys, well, with the scouting America. And I just, you know, again, this is a big part of volunteering is a huge part of, of that community. And I know that's just one example of many. Good clarification. Thank you.
So in addition to community dumpster days, we'd also be looking at brush cleanup days. That's probably one of our bigger nuisance around the community is just general overgrowth. People aren't, you know, trees and things that start growing, getting out of hand, brush, honeysuckle, all those types of things that if they're not regularly maintained, they can spread into a nuisance pretty quickly. So going into those areas and helping residents clean that out. And then the rock the block type programs, that's really if we were to focus on an entire block. And that could include more than just junk trash debris, brush cleanup. That could include, you know, if repainting is needed or new handrails are needed or removal of a damaged fence, things like that, that could really have a positive community benefit that the residents are on board with needing that assistance and allowing volunteers in the city to help them make those improvements. And overall, we believe that these types of improvements are kind of a private property counterpart to the Beautify Belton Plan, which is the beautification plan. And that's kind of our goal with bringing these both forward together is because they build off of each other. And as I mentioned, the Summeron Trails Pilot Dumpster Day will provide some additional insight and exactly how we may need to prepare the FY27 budget requests for future events like that. And then the last thing funding needed, there's a number of goals within the comprehensive plan relating to staffing and retention, coordinating with the implementation, or continuing the implementation of the rental inspection program and to improve and maintain rental housing in the city. And then investing in home improvement programs and grant opportunities to support property maintenance and upgrades. So with that, there's a few items here that additional funding would be needed. One of the things would be potentially a third neighborhood improvement officer that would help improve our coverage throughout the city. There is additional revenues from our rental registry. There is additional revenues from our rental registration inspection program that has not fully been dedicated towards staffing, and especially since our neighborhood improvement officers are the ones that are handling those inspections, that revenue makes sense to keep that within that division within community development. And then establishing, establishing a minor home improvement, minor home improvement or repair program, or a community beautification grant, which could help assist lower, lower-income households or homeowners in targeted areas to address those property maintenance issues. And obviously, if there is any interest in that, there's a lot of different types of programs where we would have to establish exactly what those grant amounts would be, what would be eligible, what the eligibility of the applicant would be in those types of things.
All right.
So.
Yeah, any questions?
And I will mention that, to Councilmember Lawson's point, the Yard of the Month was something that was discussed by the team as well. So if there's interest in that, we can certainly explore that.
Go ahead.
I support both of those things, and I would love to see in our next budget, you know, I know we just did one, but in our next budget, to, you know, look into funding for both of those, specifically the adding of an officer. I'm not surprised by that request at all, I guess, is my point there, and I, I think we should see if we can work the budget in an appropriate way to address that. I do have a question on the, it's four slides ago, but you said a proposed change, high weeds, grass, automatic result in a violation. Can you talk me through the automatic result in a violation as opposed to just talking to them, or I guess I didn't fully understand that?
Yeah, so, so the reason behind that is that we've had a number of situations where officers have communicated with a resident or a tenant on mowing, and they said that they would do it, and we took their word for it that they would do that, and then we go back and it wasn't mowed. And that, again, that delays the process of getting that addressed, should they not mow. So typically on a door hanger courtesy notice, we usually give five days roughly to, to address that, and if they go back five days, then that's now 15 days that we have high weeds and grass, if we have to send a violation notice and they don't address it. So it automatically starts that clock when we catch it, so that, that way if they don't do it, and if they didn't do it this time, there's also a higher likelihood that they won't do it another time in the summer. And so it's better to just start that upfront, and that way it's, it's on the record that if this is not done regularly throughout the, the growing season, that we will abate that. And we've received a lot of, a lot of concerns from, from neighbors who are dealing with some of these situations and have dealt with it in the past.
Okay, thanks for the explanation.
Yeah.
I'm just chewing on it.
Go ahead.
I'd like to see two more officers. I'd like to have a, a officer per ward. You know, just if we're trying to build relationships, even if they rotate around, it'd be nice to have an officer per ward.
Yeah, what we, what we talked about internally, if there was a third officer, the third officer would focus on the high priority corridors, and then the two other officers would really get back into the more of the neighborhoods. So one is almost like a commercial corridor, focusing on the commercial corridors, and the other two would focus on residential.
Oh, one first, focusing just on commercial?
Commercial, and then the, the main corridors, which includes residential on major streets.
Anybody else?
Hey, I got a question.
Go ahead.
I know that, I, I'm not against the two more code enforcement or one more code enforcement, but we're literally just trying to get rid of our dispatch because we're trying to save $300,000. Is that money going to pay for the two new code enforcement officers?
It's unknown at this time.
I was just making sure. I just, I just would like to know where the money's coming from, so. That's all I got.
Yeah, in case I wasn't clear, we need to be prudent in how we address our budget for that, but I am in favor of us addressing our budget and for that, so. That's what I was, I just want to be clear on what I was saying personally.
Anybody else? Hearing none, thanks. All right, so short-term rentals, you're still up.
Yeah, so we are bringing back kind of a, a more final draft for the city council. We presented a draft to, to you guys back in February of this year, after discussing that with the tourism council. So some of the concerns that we heard during the February meeting was how short-term rentals may impact non-tourist-based rentals. So there was some, some questions of exactly how, you know, somebody who may be planning on doing a short-term rental, but then they end up saying more than 30 days. We haven't fully addressed that issue, but that is, that's something that we will continue to look at. It's not really something that other short-term rental regulations focus on, and so it really comes down to what is the overall intent of the, this, the unit and what the landlord or the property owner is trying to do. If short-term rentals should only be a temporary use in conjunction with a special event, so I think there were some concerns about fully amending the code and allowing this outside of a, a special event like the World Cup. And then overall concerns with the nuisances and the ability to shut down short-term rentals. We have built in that nuisance limit to three, three citations, and we shut that down. Appropriates, appropriateness of short-term rentals in residential areas, and then if permitted, limiting these to Old Town. So based on that, we sent a revised draft to Tourism Council last month. They had some additional questions about the time limit for short-term rentals. Again, that kind of gets into that 30 days versus longer-term rentals, concerns about occupancy limits, which I will discuss in a later slide. And then overall, we don't believe that the, what we're bringing forward, or what we're proposing to bring forward, we don't believe that a special event declaration would be necessary because we wouldn't propose to make any special changes for the World Cup if, if, based on the code that we're proposing. We've, we've written the regulations to be permanent, however, they could be reviewed at any time through a code amendment. So based on those changes, especially the concerns regarding impact to residential neighborhoods, we have more tailored this to really focusing on Old Town Belton. We think that's likely where there's going to be more interest in short-term rentals because of Main Street and other events and things that are going on there. Also, that's pretty common in some of the other regulations that we, what we reviewed in Lee Summit and Excelsior Springs, that they really limit them to their tourism district. And then outside of the tourism district, or in this case, Old Town Belton, would be a special use permit. And so the special use permit would likely limit the number that would be outside of Old Town Belton. They'd have to file the application, go through the public hearing process through Planning Commission, and then ultimately, council has a say on whether or not that special use permit should be approved based on, you know, a number of factors, but including whether or not there are concerns from the residents of the neighborhood. Property owners must register, just like they would with the rent, current rental inspection program. The property owner must be within 30 miles, or if not, they have to be, have to designate a local point of contact. We are proposing that any property owner is limited to no more than five registrations in the city of Belton. Based on the demand that we anticipate from short-term rentals, I don't think that's going to be an issue. And then, of course, registration would be required before listing on any third-party website, and then a dwelling unit cannot be registered as a short-term rental the same time it's addressed as a rental unit. And so that's something that the property owner's going to have to figure out if they're going to be short-term rental, or they're going to be a longer-term rental. They're subject to different standards and requirements and fees in the, what we're proposing. And then any registration would be approved on an annual 12-month basis, just like we do for rental registrations and business licenses. So some of the high-level things, we've talked about, many, minimum parking requirements have to be met, and any non-conformities be brought into compliance. So that would include a gravel parking, a gravel parking area would need to be paved. Our goal is to, if they're going to be allowed, that they, they bring the property up to Units cannot be used for recreation, reception space, parties or meetings. There are cer- certain operational and performance standards that would be applied to the unit and inspected before we would issue a registration or a license to them, and then that annual inspection would happen before they're renewed. Additionally, if we get concerns from guests or complaints that they provide documented evidence that those items aren't being met, we would reach out to the property owner and ask to inspect that. The occupancy question came up. This was probably the longer bit of conversation with the Tourism Council. So one of the things that we heard when we had the first draft from the Tourism Council were concerns of, you know, larger families that may be traveling together and wanting to stay in a house, and especially any kind of restrictions on children. So I mean, if you had, you know, two siblings and their families traveling together, you had four adults and they each have four or five kids, they're going to easily have 10 to 15 people in that house. A number of cities restrict that to a maximum of 10 guests. Some cities even go as low as eight guests in North Kansas City. We were trying to be a little bit more flexible with that, but based on some of the changes that we made, the Tourism Council indicated they would like us to dial that back a bit. So what we proposed to them was still keeping that maximum occupancy of two adults per bedroom, plus an additional two adults per dwelling unit. We added sleeping space because it's not uncommon that in a, a living room or some other kind of finished living space, they may have a hide-a-bed or something else that they would, would use. That's pretty common in a lot of these spaces. So we were trying to accommodate that. There were some concerns about ingress egress, especially if they're doing it in, in a basement that doesn't have windows, so we would build that in. But based on that, there's a, some of the other cities there on the screen are what they are restricted to, and so we are happy to dial that back. Generally, most of the housing in Belton, you're not going to have a lot of bedrooms in it, and a lot of space for, you know, huge parties. It's not like some of the larger properties on Lake of the Ozarks or anything like that. So Grandview just recently adopted it, and they did two persons per legal bedroom and an additional person per unit, and that seems fairly common for a number of the cities. And so if that's where we should go, we're, we're happy to go that direction. As I mentioned, we do have the built-in denial or revocation process in there. Registration may be denied or revoked after three or more code violations within a 12-month period. That includes citations or tickets for property maintenance nuisances and offenses that constitute a chronic nuisance. In addition to that, any dwelling, any dwelling, that, that dwelling unit cannot be licensed by the same property owner again for two years. However, if they have other short-term rentals that have been in good standing during that time, we would renew those. We just would not renew any others. And then, of course, we would have the violations if they're operating without a valid registration, which we already do that on the, we've, we've only had maybe two or three over the last year that we've received complaints for, and with documentation that they were actively listed on a third-party site, and so we did address that through the code violation process, and were able to get those resolved. Lastly, on the fees, we are proposing, we would propose a $120 unit fee, which aligns with our business license fee, which is $70 for a license plus $50 inspection fee. In addition to that, if they're doing a special use permit outside of Old Town Belton, there's a $150 application fee for that. And then the property owner or the host would be responsible for collecting the 5% hotel motel tax that we have on the books, and that would have to be paid monthly to the Finance Department, which is what's in the ordinance. And then we would not renew any registrations until we've confirmed that that has been paid up for the previous year. So that is what we currently have written. I'm happy to answer any questions, and definitely any feedback on thoughts, concerns, limitations in terms of where these should be, if we should just limit it to Old Town Belton, if we want to do special use permit elsewhere. All that information is helpful, so we know exactly how to bring something forward to the council.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Last time we talked about this, I had brought up that I have some concerns. And I have shared with my residents, or anyone who wanted to talk to me about it, that if they wanted to, you know, provide me with some feedback on an idea of short-term rentals, and I pretty overwhelmingly heard a lot of the same things that I, that I brought up of concerns about this. And so, in fact, I can't even recall someone being in favor of it. That said, this doesn't touch Ward 1, so. I, I'm not going to hear a lot of the complaints, I don't think. So.
Excellent segue.
Go ahead, Ward 3.
Yeah, I also have concerns about this philosophically, and don't love the idea of Ward 3 being the guinea pig, even with Old Town being kind of our tourism draw. This conversation was born of the World Cup coming to town, and people aren't going to necessarily seek out Belton's Main Street, Old Town area as a tourist hit. They're going to just look for whatever housing's available, is the read I'm getting. So yeah, just to his point, there's some reservations, and I don't know that Ward 3 would be psyched about it. I think Chris was going to add to that.
Go ahead.
Actually, I do know that people are staying as far away as like Sedalia for that. I know that MoDOT's gotten calls about people staying in MoDOT and how they're going to get to the stadium and if they could rent bikes from Sedalia to the stadium. So I think that Belton could be a factor in this. I, I do want to kind of watch it, how we do it, but I'm not against it. Everybody I've talked to in our ward isn't against it. I think it can actually fix up some areas, so.
Anybody else? All right, bring something back.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. I demand I entertain a motion entered executive session, discuss matters pertaining to individually identifiable personal records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment according to Missouri State Statute 610.021, 1.13, and the record be closed in the meeting adjourned from there.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Thompson?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Bryan?
Aye.
Lawson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Aye.
McCallum?
I am here, and aye.
Thank you, Johnson.
Aye.
Motion passes.